Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is October 11th, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And I'll read the invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Okay. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soproni. Mike, thank you for your assistance. And just in case you don't know it, the screen is not on, so if you can do anything about it, that's fine. If not, let's see. Approval of minutes, Mrs. Fisher?
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes for September the 27th. I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Thanks, Dee. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes. Thank you. We now have proclamations. We have one we're gonna... Mrs. Fisher's gonna read.
I have a proclamation, whereas Make a Difference Day connects people with opportunities to serve, strengthens communities, and promotes civic engagement. And whereas Make a Difference Day is one of the largest single days of services nationwide, uniting tens of thousands of volunteers with a common mission to improve the lives of others and through community-driven service projects. And whereas over two decades ago, by Points of Light, the city of Kettering is proud to be a nationally recognized participant. And whereas the city of Kettering will provide opportunities for all to participate in this day of service, designed to leverage the dedication, commitment, and power of volunteers to address a variety of needs in our community. And whereas the volunteers from service clubs, faith-based organizations, Blue Star Mothers, local schools, and local residents will assist the city by installing a native plant rain garden at Van Buren Park, help residents in the Van Buren neighborhood complete outdoor projects, and create holiday greeting cards for active-duty military members in nursing homes, residents at either Christ Church, United Methodist—I think that's messed up—United StatesLink, yeah—or their own home with kits provided by the City of Kettering Volunteer Office. Therefore, our mayor, Peggy Lainer, does hereby proclaim October the 22nd to be Make a Difference Day in the city of Kettering, and urges all citizens to observe this day by joining efforts to make a positive impact and truly make a difference in our community, witnessed by our mayor.
Okay, thank you. Accepting the award will be Don Kirchner. And, Don, you want to come down here? I just noticed I need to sign this, so just hold on a second.
Well, this is real time.
This is real time.
This is real time. Just in case anyone's got it, it's my signature. There you go. If you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Lainer, and thank you, City Council. The city of Kettering is very proud to enlist the help of volunteers and community partners to participate once again in National Make a Difference Day. Volunteers will gather at Christ Church to create holiday greeting cards for active-duty military in collaboration with Blue Star Mothers, as well as holiday placemats for those residing in area nursing homes. As part of our Cities of Service initiatives, volunteers will travel throughout the 2022 Cities of Service neighborhood, bordering the streets of Patterson Road, Smithville Road, Four Boulevard, Culver Avenue, to assist property owners with yard maintenance, such as leaf raking and yard debris removal. Volunteers will also work on the installation of a native plant rain garden in Van Buren Park, thanks to the grant support from Keep Montgomery County Beautiful. These Make a Difference Day efforts would not be possible without your support, Mayor Lainer, the support of City Council, city staff, our Cities of Service team, our Volunteer Advisory Council, and the hundreds of volunteers who join with us every year as we strive to make a positive impact, not only in our local community, but throughout our world. You're all invited to join us on Saturday, October the 22nd, between 9:00 and noon. Most importantly, there will be coffee and other snacks, so if it's cold and rainy, we've got you covered. And if anybody has any questions, you're welcome to call the volunteer office at 296-2433. Thank you so much for your support.
Okay, thank you very much, Don.
Thank you, Don.
And we can all hope that the weather that we've been having this week holds up for that day. It'd be wonderful.
It never does.
It's not spa-snock, so it's... We have public hearings next, and there are no public hearings this evening. We'll move along to public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Ordinances and second reading. There are no ordinances and second reading. Resolutions. Mrs. Fisher, I'm gonna call on you again to introduce the legislation.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for testing services from Occupational Health Centers of Ohio for employees and pre-employment drug and alcohol screening. The estimated cost is $300... I'm sorry, $30,000. It's also in the budget, requested by the Human Resources Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Sweeterman, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize us to enter into a contract with Occupational Health Centers of Ohio. The reason we're here before you tonight is, this is obviously something we do on a regular basis and have done it for many years. It's our pre-employment and post-employment drug and alcohol screenings. In 2022, the number of screenings that we have requested, as well as the individual cost per unit, has gone up. So for the first time, the cost of this agreement will be above the $25,000 threshold, and thus we're here this evening asking for your approval. The estimated cost is $30,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution this evening authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for banking and related services. The estimated cost is $20,000. That is included in the budget. It's requested by Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Sweeterman, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. This will allow us to go out and get negotiated quotes for banking services for the city. Over the last decade, we have been utilizing Chase for our bank, and it is time to go out for quotes to see if... to get a new contract for banking services. The estimated cost is $20,000. It is included in the budget, and it is expected that it will be another long-term agreement with whichever vendor we go with. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay, not seeing any, please call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the state of Ohio and a third-party independent public accountant for audit services for the year 2022. This is being requested by the Finance Department. The estimated cost is $60,528, and the amount budgeted is $60,528. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Sweeterman, one last time.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize us to enter into a contract with the state of Ohio and a third-party independent public accountant for audit services for the calendar year 2022. So our 2022 audit, which will take place starting in March of 2023. The state auditor has requested that we pass this resolution to extend the utilization of the public accounting firm that we currently use, Plattenburg &amp; Associates. We've been using them for the last 10 years. Originally, the state auditor had anticipated that they would do our audit for the 2022 year, and now they've requested we extend for a year with Plattenburg. This is achieved by this resolution this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches on various streets as part of the 2023 curb, sidewalk, and drive approach repair project, Project 05123. And as requested by the Engineering Department, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Bergstreser, could you elaborate?
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned, this resolution will declare the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches for our 2023 curb, sidewalk, and drive approach repair program. The city policy is that property owners are responsible for the necessary repairs to these items, and they will be assessed for the repairs per Section 729 of the Highway Revise Code. We do this now in October. We passed this resolution in October to give property owners sufficient time, if they want to make the repairs themselves, to hire their own contractor and have the repairs finished by the March-April timeframe of 2023, when our contractor would come in to start the work. So a copy of the preliminary estimated assessments for each property are on file with the clerk of council and attached to the resolution. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiating quotes to contract for the 2022 street construction tree replacement program, city project number 02-050N. This is being requested by the Engineering Department, and the cost is $40,000. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Bergstreser, would you like to explain?
Thank you, Your Honor. Typically, this program for street construction tree replacements typically does not come before city council, but this year, we are planning to plant approximately 40 trees along the extension of College Drive, which was finished in 2019, and also Donation Circle, which was completed in 2021 in the Miami Valley Research Park. So the cost threshold goes over the $25,000 for council action. So this... these street trees are being planted because these streets are finished, and they are keeping with the original landscape plan for these two roads in the Research Park overall landscape plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the submission of applications for Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sweeterman?
Mr. Bergstreser.
You're right, Mr. Bergstreser.
Thank you, Your Honor.
This is the time of year that MVRPC, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, solicits applications for federal funding for projects. So this year, we are submitting three projects. The first is a major resurfacing of Dorothy Lane between South Dixie Highway and Hague Avenue. A second is a smaller reconstruction project on Bigger Road between East David Road and Wilmington Pike. And then a third project we are submitting a request for is the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at the Government Center and Governor's Place. So for the Dorothy Lane project, construction funding is proposed for calendar year 2026, while for Bigger Road, the funds would be available in the 2027, 2028 timeframe, depending on funding capacity. And just a note on the EV charging stations project, this is a new project that MVRPC is leading region-wide. They are reserving about $1.5 million out of the new carbon reduction program funding that's come down from the federal government, from the new bipartisan infrastructure law that was recently passed. So as I mentioned, it's a regional project. They will be the lead agent to install electric vehicle chargers around the region, and they would be 100% funded through federal funds with no local match requirement from the cities. So we are... right now, they are collecting locations for potential candidates. We have submitted... we will be submitting these two locations here at the Government Center and Governor's Place, and we'll just work with them on putting a project together if we are selected as part of that program. So be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a Community Housing Impact and Preservation Lead Abatement Program grant from the Ohio Department of Development Services Agency. In January of this year, the city council accepted an award of $250,000 in CHIP funds from the state of Ohio. This new program for lead abatement is a program designed to assist with the cost to eliminate lead-based paint hazards in homes that are currently receiving CHIP assistance. So these grant funds will be offered to our CHIP housing rehabilitation clients. We're estimating a total cost or funding need of $45,000, and the funds must be expended by April of 2024. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, to provide application processing services for Montgomery County through the U.S. Treasury's Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding. The estimated cost is $750,000. Those funds are available. It's requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we have been working for the last several months with Montgomery County on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, where we have been the administrative agent to assist in dispersing funds to those in need of emergency rental assistance, mainly for the jurisdictions that are involved in our Kettering Municipal Court, so Kettering, Moraine, Centerville, and Washington Township. Through this program, we have been able to prove that we can get the money to those in need and those who have applied, and the county has continued to grow the amount of funds allocated to us to assist them. So this additional $750,000 will bring our total to $5.2 million in funds that we're assisting in disbursement. And as you know, we are assisting with rent that is owed, as well as rent moving forward with the applicants. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Home Ownership Center of Greater Dayton to provide counseling services as part of the city's housing and foreclosure prevention programs. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And Mark, we're still with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution allow us to... allows us to continue our relationship with the Home Ownership Center of Greater Dayton. The city, through our community development program, offers foreclosure prevention programs that are administered through the center. Again, we've been doing this since 2008 with the center. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for operation of the city's fair housing program. Estimated cost $34,000, and as requested by the Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution allows us to enter into a contract with Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for the operation of the city's fair housing programs. As a result of using community development block grant funds and home program funds, the city is required to affirmatively further fair housing. To achieve this requirement, we have contracted annually for the last several years with Miami Valley Fair Housing Center. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes. Okay, we now have ordinances and first reading. However, we have none. Certifications and petitions, we also have none, I believe. Is that correct?
Your Honor, we have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. We will now move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you this evening. The first is just to continue to announce that the Medicare Open Enrollment Period begins on October the 15th, and once again, the city will be assisting our residents with that process through our Kettering Connection. You can reach the Kettering Connection at 296-3330 to schedule an appointment with Vicki for that process. On Monday, October the 17th, the city will begin its leaf collection program for the year. We'll start in District 1 and work our way through and make several rounds through the city between now and the end of fall. This is just a reminder that we pick up leaves. We do not pick up brush and other yard debris. Other yard debris should be taken to our yard debris drop-off site on Woodman Center Drive. You can rake your leaves out to the curb. They do not have to be raked out all the way into the street, just adjacent to the street, and our crews will come by and pick those up. But again, no sticks, please. Dangerous for our employees and dangers for our equipment. The Board of Community Relations will be hosting a residents' focus group. That will take place on October the 17th at the Deeds Room on the lower... which is the lower-level conference room of the Government Center here in our north building. We anticipate it being a 75- to 90-minute process, and we're giving and seeking input on fair housing planning process here in the city and to get input from folks who participate in the focus groups in regards to housing needs. You heard all about Make a Difference Day, so I'll just remind you, Saturday, October 22nd, from 9:00 to noon at Van Buren Park. And if you would like to volunteer or have questions, you can contact our volunteer office. The National Drug Takeback Day this year will be on Saturday, October the 29th. Our police department will be participating from 10:00 to 2:00 at the police department location here at the Kettering Government Center complex. I do want to mention that we have a drug drop-off box in the lobby of the police department that is available every day for our residents to use. So if you have prescription drugs that you want to remove from your house and take the drug buyback, you can drop that off in the box. Do want to remind everybody, we're talking about mainly pills. We do not accept liquids or syringes for this event. It is October, so Beggar's Night will be at the end of the month. It'll be on Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We encourage everyone to participate, and we encourage everyone to participate safely. And lastly, Your Honor, we're...
Our last agenda item tonight for resolutions is to appropriate the $750,000 that was previously discussed for the rental assistance program, and also to appropriate $101,954.16 related to two TIF funds that the city currently has. So these are tax increment financing funds. The TIF that we refer to as the Delco Meyer TIF has expired out in time, and the remaining balance in that fund is a little over $40,000. Those funds are being appropriated back to the general fund. The H&amp;H TIF has met the obligations of completing the projects that were assigned to that TIF and will be dissolving that TIF as well. There are, there is currently about $61,000 in that TIF. That will leave us with three ongoing tax increment financing projects still here in the city, but closing these two this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
We have any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Okay, we now have ordinances in first reading, however, we have none. Certifications and petitions, we also have none, I believe. Is that correct?
Your Honor, we have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. We will now move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you this evening. The first is just to continue to announce that the Medicare open enrollment period begins on October the 15th, and once again, the city will be assisting our residents with that process through our Kettering Connection. You can reach the Kettering Connection at 296-3330 to schedule an appointment with Vicki for that process. On Monday, October the 17th, the city will begin its leaf collection program for the year. We'll start in District One and work our way through and make several rounds through the city between now and the end of fall. This is just a reminder that we pick up leaves. We do not pick up brush and other yard debris. Other yard debris should be taken to our yard debris drop-off site on Woodman Center Drive. You can rake your leaves out to the curb. They do not have to be raked out all the way into the street, just adjacent to the street, and our crews will come by and pick those up. But again, no sticks, please. Dangers for our employees and dangers for our equipment. The Board of Community Relations will be hosting a residents' focus group. That will take place on October the 17th at the Deeds Room on the lower, which is the lower level conference room of the government center here in our north building. We anticipate it being a 75 to 90-minute process, and we're be giving and seeking input on fair housing planning process here in the city and to get input from folks who participate in the focus groups in regards to housing needs. You heard all about Make a Difference Day, so I'll just remind you, Saturday, October 22nd, from 9:00 to noon at Van Buren Park. And if you would like to volunteer or have questions, you can contact our volunteer office. The National Drug Takeback Day this year will be on Saturday, October the 29th. Our police department will be participating from 10:00 to 2:00 at the police department location here at the Kettering Government Center complex. I do want to mention that we have a drug drop-off box in the lobby of the police department that is available every day for our residents to use. So if you have prescription drugs that you want to remove from your house and take the drug buyback, you can drop that off in the box. Do want to remind everybody, we're talking about mainly pills. We do not accept liquids or syringes for this event. It is October, so Beggar's Night will be at the end of the month. It'll be on Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We encourage everyone to participate, and we encourage everyone to participate safely. And lastly, Your Honor, we're going to try our hand here at Technology Fire Prevention Week, and we have a little video for you.
Hello, my name is Chris Codill with the Kettering Fire Department. I'm here today preparing for any emergency that may come our way with my crew here at Station 34. This year, on October 9th marks the 100th year anniversary of the National Fire Prevention Agency's Fire Prevention Week. And this year, as we prepare for any emergency, we're asking you at home to also be prepared. Today's home fires burn hotter than they used to, minimizing your time to escape. By the time the alarm sounds, you may have as little as two minutes to escape the home. So this year, we're asking that you remember, fire won't wait. Plan your escape. Make sure your home escape plan meets the needs of all your family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities.
Smoke alarms should be installed inside every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of your home. Smoke alarms should be interconnected, so when one sounds, they all sound.
Know at least two ways out of every room if possible. Make sure all doors and windows open easily.
Have an outside meeting place a safe distance from your home, where everyone should meet.
Practice your home fire drill at least twice a year with everyone in the household, including guests. Practice at least once during the day and at night.
With how quickly fires spread these days, it is up to us to move as quickly as possible. That way, we can respond in an appropriate amount of time. As we said before, fires grow very quickly these days. You may have as little as two minutes. The minute you hear the beep of a fire alarm, you need to get on your feet, get outside, call 911. Please do not go back in the house. It is up to us to go inside and rescue any extra pets, property, or anything of value that you could be concerned about.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have for tonight for the community update. The video itself is available on our website and will be on our social media as well.
With sound?
Louder sound.
Yes, with sound.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We will now move on to Mr. Gleason. If you'd like to come on down, Amy, you can stay there or come down, whichever you'd prefer to do. You're going to be at his side, so you might as well.
Called to follow a video. Mayor Laner, members of council, first, I just want to say thank you for this incredible opportunity. I'm truly humbled by the faith and trust that you're placing in me to be your next city manager. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to be part of the leadership team that leads Kettering into the future. I'd like to offer three thoughts. The first is that, as you well know, success in a public service career cannot be achieved without the support of your family. And I am incredibly grateful to my wife, Amy, who you introduced a minute ago, for her steadfast support of me, not only through this process, but our many years of public service. We are excited, Amy and I, as well as Benjamin and Lottie, our kids, to make Kettering our home. The second thing I would like to say is I'm honored to follow Mark Schwieterman, who probably doesn't want me to talk to about him this evening. And I use the word "follow" because I have no illusion that I'm going to replace Mark. I'm only hopeful that I will be able to follow him and build upon the exceptional work that he has done for many years here in the city of Kettering. Lastly, I will just say that I am excited and eager to work with each of you and to work with the outstanding employees of the city of Kettering, our business community, our citizens, and our many community partners, both here in Kettering as well as in the region. I look forward to getting to work in December, and I once again want to thank you for the opportunity that you're giving, both me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We too are anxious to start moving ahead, and you're right, we cannot replace Mark, but you can certainly follow in his tradition, so appreciate that. With that, like council reports? Oh, other, wait a minute, go back. Oh. Yeah, all right. Sorry. Yeah, we, this is the opportunity for anyone to speak, whether it was on something other than legislation. So if there's anyone in the audience who wanted to do that, now is the time to come forward. You don't, all right. I don't think we have anyone who wants to speak. So now we will move to the council reports.
So I'm going to describe a great day in Kettering, and that happened on October the 2nd. I had my grandson for the day, because my daughter's working on her master's. We got up in the morning. We went to one of our wonderful parks, had a great day in the park. Then we went on to the pumpkin patch. So if you've not stopped at the pumpkin patch there on Woodman Drive at Greenmont Church, great place to pick up a pumpkin. Unfortunately, because I had a three-year-old with me, I picked up nine. We then left there, and we went to the firehouse. What an awesome event that was. Your guys were awesome with him, let him sit in the seat and drive the truck. Nothing better than that for a three-year-old little boy. Running around like crazy, exhausted, dropped him back off with mom, then headed over to Mill Creek to the block party. Mary Now and Bill have a wonderful neighborhood, and I would foot stomp that because their neighborhood is what Kettering's all about. Neighbors taking care of neighbors. Everyone knew each other, very welcoming. The other thing I want to uplift is Jenny Borchers for her supper club. It's where she invites various folks to come out. I happened to be invited this month. It's to help students interact with adults. For some of them, I had one young man that just said, "I'm so awkward." I said, "You're fine." Talk about networking, talk about careers. What a great thing she has started at the high school to get those kids prepared for their next stage in life. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jackie.
On my way on that day that Jackie described, on my way there, I saw this youngster running around out on David Road and had to stop and get him, and I found out it was your grandson.
Oh, stop it. It wasn't on David.
He was running around, literally. But the medics were there, they were watching. I want to just mention, a meeting I attended today was a celebration. It was a celebration of the U.S. 35 land expansion project. It was held over AES Ohio's headquarters on Woodman Drive, and there were just a few folks there, and they were all lifers on this project. Like, it's been going on 15, 20 years, that lane expansion. But what's great for Kettering is it did, it added a lane for folks coming out of Dayton, and the biggest thing that's finished now, of course, with that, is the Smithville Road interchange and the flyover being eliminated. And a lot of folks that come to Kettering use the Smithville Road exit. But also coming up is there's going to be some changes at the Woodman Drive exit, even though now we have the new lane in. So both of those are like gateways from the north to the city of Kettering. So there's a lot of, a lot of folks there from ODOT, from Montgomery County, from Green County, and it was kind of chaired by the head of AES Ohio, and he was the host, and Brian Martin, and from MVRPC, which is a big contributor, of course, to the efforts that took place there. The only other thing I want to mention is I take a little, a little bit of liberty with inside Kettering, and I want to mention, no more, now more than ever, support our local businesses, shop, carry out, and buy Kettering. That's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Yes, want to mention again that I'm happy to see the development of 103 new housing units going on in Kettering, and just want to say congratulations to the partners, to our partner, St. Mary's Development Corporation, over residential construction and county corp, where I have the opportunity to serve as a trustee on providing new homes for area families and seniors. 52 affordable senior housing units, 51 new workforce housing units. Also, we have another community gem in Kettering. Found out today, Philip Dibwig from Washington University is receiving a Nobel Peace Prize, or, I'm sorry, Nobel Prize in Economics, and just fantastic news. He was raised here in Kettering, went to Fairmont High School, and got two advanced degrees at Yale after that, and now he's getting the Nobel Prize. And last, just, someone else might mention this as well, but more good news for Ohio's economy with this 4.4 billion electric battery plant from Honda that's going to bring in another 2,500 jobs. And between that and Intel, lots of good things happening, but it also brings back the first point, how important it is for us to have new housing. So happy about all the housing plans on our agenda tonight, and that we'll continue the homeownership counseling and also the rental assistance program we have, Stay Put, that that is continuing to be funded. We've helped 278 applicants. I know that that is a part of the things that Lisa oversees with the Board of Community Relations, and people can apply, there's money available.
Great. Thank you very much.
I've got a few comments. I too, like, like Ms. Fisher mentioned, I was at the Mill Creek Block Party on the 2nd, which was a great event, my first time there. My wife and I also took the two grandsons to the fire open house, and the boys had a great time. But my, my big takeaway was this, I talked to a couple of the firefighters, and it was so obvious how proud they were to serve on Kettering's Fire Department. One young fellow, I can't remember his name, 30-ish, said he didn't start in Kettering's Fire Department, he got here as quick as he could, and he's never leaving because of the, the work atmosphere that they have. And like most citizens, I hope I never see the fire department or an EMT truck at my house, but it's reassuring to know we, we got the top of the line. We're world-class when it comes to our emergency services, so we should all take great pride in that. I would like to congratulate the Fairmont football team. They beat Wayne for the first time in 14 years this past Friday, and I will be there this Friday when we take down our arch rivals to the south, Centerville, for the first time in I don't know how many years. So in my lifetime, I hope we could beat Centerville again. And lastly, my personal congratulations and thank you to Matt for coming on board with Kettering. That's it.
A couple weeks ago, we were, a lot, most of us, I think, were able to attend the first suburbs meeting being hosted here in Kettering. I wanted to thank Mr. Duke for inviting us. It was a good chance to hear from the Montgomery County ombudsman, Diane Wellborn, and she was just fascinating, everything they do. It was, it was very eye-opening, so thank you. Appreciate that. The Board of Community Relations is working on a lot of projects right now. The biggest one, we're hoping to bring the Undesign the Red Line exhibit to Kettering, which is pretty exciting, so I'll update you all when we get that in place. I want to say thank you to our Kettering Leadership Academy student who is here with us tonight. Thank you for getting that requirement out of the way. And last but not least, I want to welcome Mr. Gleason. We're excited for you and your family to join our community. Mark is a hard act to follow, but we have full faith that you'll be a great asset to the city, so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to thank all of council for being at the first suburbs meeting. It was a good turnout, 12 communities represented out of our 13, so that was, that was a great turnout. On September 29th, we had our first meeting of the New Sustainability Committee that during our retreat, we said we needed to do this. And I want to personally thank Don Kirchner, Steve Burkstreser, and Mayor Laner, who did the interview for this committee. We've got about 15 citizens, Kettering residents, that are just, the diversity of knowledge about sustainability was extremely impressive, and this, this committee is going to be doing some very, very creative things for our community. The fire headquarters experience, we're talking about the young people, being the old guy or one of them. I talked to the old guys, and I talked to three firefighters there that, between the three of them, had over 110 years of service to this community, from our volunteer fire service all the way through till it ended. And that is very, very impressive. Our guys go way back, and, and they were so proud of the stories they told. I did notice in, in the little movie we saw, though, that I noticed our firefighters put those, that gear on in about 20 seconds, and there are three members of this leader, of this council from the Leadership Academy. It took each of you about 20 minutes to put those on, so the fire, the firefighters are a lot quicker. I would personally like to welcome Matt and Amy. We're glad to have you in town. Congratulations and look forward to working with you. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. I think everyone has about covered most of the stuff that has happened. It's been a busy couple weeks. I was reminded once again how much better of a grandparent Jackie is than, than I am. Yeah, even though that was your son in your grandson's street. Sustainability Committee, you brought, covered that one pretty well. I just have one thought, and we should hang on to it. There are not very many communities that have Nobel Prize winners, and I think we ought to do something like, you know, hey, you have a sign saying, "This is the home of the Altrinites," or "This is the home of the Fairmont," something. We ought to have "This is the home of a Nobel Prize winner," so.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure. All right. That concludes our meeting for the night. One last time, thanks so much for coming over tonight, and we're looking forward to working with both of you for years to come. And with that, meeting's adjourned. The next meeting, can't leave that out, this, all right, where's the date? It's not on here. The 25th of October. And with that, meeting's adjourned.